Let's rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Good evening, everyone. Exciting times as we get towards the end of the school year and some award things happening today. If there is anyone here that is desiring to speak under number 11 in our agenda, unscheduled audience participation, there are some white cards on the table over there by the computer. And please, fill one of those out, read the instructions on it, and then work that card over to Angela, and then she'll make sure that I get them and I can run that part of the meeting efficiently. Still signing? Alright, how about the attendance?
President Donnelly?
Here.
Vice President Alessandro? Secretary Schaefer, here. Tricia Bailey?
Here.
Trusty Griffith? Trusty Foster?
Here.
Trusty Hanser?
Three members are currently not here, four due to form, so we're good. I believe we have a couple at school events that are gonna be working their way here just a little bit late. Any changes to the board agenda?
None.
Alright, with no changes, we move on to the consent agenda. Would someone like to make that motion? Corey?
I'd like to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Eric's support. How about discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pre-arranged request to address the board: awards.
So, the first item on our agenda tonight is, do we have Chandler Cheney here? Chandler, if you could stand up, please, and come forward. Chandler is a student of ours who participated through a program that we really started this year called Graduation Alliance. And Chandler has done all the work necessary to receive his diploma. So Chandler, congratulations. At this time, we're gonna go through our arrangement in recognizing students in both arts, athletics, and academics at the various schools.
Evening, everyone. You hear me? I'm good. Alright, good evening, everyone. Let's try this again. Super excited to see you recognize two different students from Clear Lake Elementary, both second graders. Mr. Reese Rosaccone and Mr. Mason Kramer. Also excited to share about the action that they've taken recently. During their most recent IB unit, how we express ourselves, the boys drew inspiration from the unit's provocation. Students did a siege-wonder thinking routine with pictures of classrooms from around the world. This sparked the discussion of how similar classrooms are organized differently based upon the resources of that community. The boys then got the idea to collect supplies for classrooms that may lack resources, and since then, they have started collecting. We're currently in the process right now of having IB exhibition for our fifth grade students. So the boys have also partnered with a current fifth grader and how she's taking action through the exhibition process. And they're collecting items for blessings in a backpack. And the boys are donating their collections and kind of tag teaming with the fifth grade students. So I think it's just outstanding work. Appreciate your boys' leadership. Excellent job.
Mason, congratulations.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Lakeville Elementary School students continually amaze me on an ongoing basis. These two boys that I have in front of you tonight, I have Bennett Snyder and I have Aiden Morris. They both have taken incredible action this year by raising monies for very important charities. Bennett Snyder raised almost $500 for the St. Baldry's Foundation, which does a lot of research for cancer. Aiden Morris raised almost $1,000 for a school-sponsored initiative, Jump Rope for Heart. Again, tremendous action. I can't thank the boys enough for all they do and their shining examples at Lakeville Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce two fantastic students from Leonard Elementary in the black dress. We have Cheyenne Calvert. In the pink dress, we have Gabriella Miranda. And they are being recognized tonight for doing some fantastic action in our school this year. Cheyenne is a fifth grader, and she's a member of Leonard Elementary's Safety Patrol. She's done a fantastic job in that role all year. However, one particular day back in the fall, Cheyenne took action that stood out. At the end of the school day, the parking lot at Leonard, if you've ever been there, is very busy with buses and parent pickups driving through the lot. One day, a three-year-old toddler got away from his parents inside the lobby of the school during the busy dismissal time. The parent became frantic as we searched for the child. As Mrs. Musgrove ran outside to look for the child, she found Cheyenne holding the toddler's hand, not letting go. Cheyenne told Mrs. Musgrove that she saw him running toward the parking lot. She asked him where his mom was, and he just kept right on running. Cheyenne knew she could not let him run into the parking lot, so she chased him down, grabbed him by the hand, and did not let go. The mother was so happy and relieved that we had a hero on our safety patrol that day. We are very proud of Cheyenne. Gabriella is also a fifth grade student, and she was our Leonard Elementary's spelling bee school champion this year. She represented our school at the regional bee at the Oakland Schools back in, I think it was February or March, down in Waterford. But Gabriella didn't just get lucky to win our bee. She took intentional action which started months and months before. Gabriella's older sister, Miavella, represented Leonard Elementary at the regional spelling bee in 2017. And Gabriella was determined to follow in her sister's footsteps. In September, Gabriella took it upon herself to find online resources for practice. She printed practice sheets off, framed them, and hung them in her room. For the next several months, Gabriella worked during recess and brain break practicing the words. Oftentimes, she would sit on the swings during recess practicing her spelling. Her action and determination paid off as she correctly spelled the word guidance to win the school's spelling bee. Congratulations.
Good evening. I have two absolutely outstanding students from Oxford Elementary School that I get the pleasure of introducing tonight. I know that the board and all of our parents have heard of the IB learner profile. We start teaching it from our kids from pre-K, and it's one of those things that lasts with our kids all the way through their experience in Oxford schools. And I know that the board is gonna be hearing tonight about the profile of the graduate. And so, we're starting early by introducing two kids that I think truly live that learner profile. I'm gonna start with Vivian Bailey tonight. Vivian Bailey is a fifth grader at Oxford Elementary. She is a very smart student. She takes her grades very seriously. Vivian is also incredibly athletic, especially in the winter time. I know she was very focused on the travel volleyball world. But the main reason that I brought her today was Vivian also played a huge role in our high school play. Vivian had to leave school a little bit early quite a few days, but Vivian was also spending significant late nights doing those rehearsals. And I think you performed the play like six times over the course of those few days. And if I remember, and I think you might have even been a little under the weather at one point during the play too. And she still managed to be up on stage every single one of those performances. And so, I'm very excited to introduce to you Vivian Bailey, and we brought her today for being incredibly balanced. Ethan Carr is a fourth grader at Oxford Elementary School, and I'm bringing Ethan today for being reflective. Ethan has done more personal change this year than probably any student that I've seen in 21 years. Ethan has really worked hard in improving himself in a whole bunch of different ways. Ethan's worked at getting along with other people. Ethan's been working incredibly hard at his grades. And it's one of those things where it's truly taken the village. I know that's one of those overused phrases. But between grandparents, between school, between some outside help, Ethan's got a whole lot of support. But the amazing part is Ethan has taken advantage of that support, and the amount of growth that he's made in a year has absolutely blown us away at Oxford Elementary School. And so, we wanted to introduce Ethan for being a reflective student tonight.
Hello, everyone. In true OMS fashion, I've brought a lot of kids here for you to see today. First off... Grace, you're gonna stop right there. Sorry. This is our robotics team 5291. This is the tower team. And I'm bringing them and introducing them to you this evening because not only have they led their other three teams here at the middle school, but they were chosen and selected to compete in the World Championships this spring in Detroit. And as we watched the results come in, I think probably no one was surprised that they did very, very well. Led by their coaches, Anne Hayden and Harry Restoni. They're here somewhere. They ended up second, excuse me, 11th at the end of the three days. They ended up 11th out of 80 teams. And they actually were second, I believe, or first in all of the middle school teams in this competition. Because it was a high school and middle school competition, and they were the first place of the middle school. So, they have worked hard. It's a long, long season. We are already preparing for next season. And we're gonna bid goodbye to our eighth graders and wish them well. But I wanted to introduce to you our sixth graders, Emma Beggs, Jenna Duong, Tristan Kajarski, and Michael Restoni. And our seventh graders, Lila Hayden and Grace Vandenberg. And then our eighth graders, Wyatt Ashley, Luke Datsko, Michael Duong at Foster, and Ms. Katie Restoni. So, congratulations to all of you. You may know something special about this team. It may be not evident this evening, but this is our team that has more girls than boys. A little unusual in the robotics world, and we're really proud not only of our girls but our boys, but that's something unique about this team. I can always get that to them tomorrow.
Yeah, it's okay.
Oh, it's here. We went through this five times. It's here.
You did a good job.
Okay, next up, and you filled the realm of academics, I bring four students in front of you today. They don't know why I've invited them here. They know it has something to do with academics, but what they don't know is we've been tracking their progress for all the last three years. And these four students have maintained a perfect 4.0 GPA, gold honors, all three years of middle school. So, of the almost 400 students in the class, these four have maintained that throughout middle school. So, we're really, of course, proud of them. We have Ms. Grace Buzu, Michael Duong, Aubrey Greenfield, and Sammy Hurst. Aubrey thought she was coming here to get a check. Mr. Thrown, I haven't heard that. He told her she got cookies instead. No problem. Wyatt, thank you, guys. Congratulations. Alex, come on up. This is Mr. Alex Van Haren, and some of you may know his charity, Stars for Cozy Kids. Alex, when he was at OES, began his charity. To date, they've donated, he has donated over 4,000 winter items across our community. Alex also chooses a charity or something per month to donate to and have his charity work on. This month, May, it's Rochester Rocket. And tell me how many books that you donated to Rochester Rocket this month?
This month, we have about 500.
500 books that he's donated. So, every month, he has another charity. And he also, this year, was recognized by Prudential. He won a distinguished honoree for the state of Michigan for the Prudential Community Service Award. So, we're really proud of the work that Alex does at OMS. Next up is Ms. Ava Karen. And what is special about Ava, she's a seventh grader, she last weekend competed in a Chinese competition. She recited "The Very Hungry Caterpillar" in Chinese and won first place for the Chinese language learners. And so, she and her teacher, Ms. Xu, competed in Detroit. You spent all day there. And again, we're really proud of the way that she represented Oxford and did a really good job and has done marvelous job learning Chinese. So, good job. And finally, this evening, my wrestlers come on in, Lucas and Judah. Hard to believe, but Lucas was a 105-pound wrestler a couple months ago. Probably can't make it tonight. But Lucas and Judah are county champions, and along with two other of our eighth graders. And they led our team this year. It was a close meet coming down to the wire. And this is the third year. We three-keed-ed this year as champions, county champions in wrestling. And I believe out of the 11 years, Oxford Middle School has won the county six times. So, they will be going on to high school and being a big impactful part of that program. And we're really proud of Lucas Smith and Judah Whitman.
Good evening. I'm Lea Van Hiden, and I'm from Oxford Bridges High School. And tonight, I'm... Thank you. Can you probably give me a better reading? So, I'm pretty low. I have the honor tonight of recognizing five of my students for their exceptional year this year. They did a wonderful job academically, as well as a lot of personal growth. So, Austin Gracie, Tyler Maren, David Palacios, Adriana Conteras, and Anna Wright. Thank you so much for the students that you've been this year. I appreciate your growth, and I appreciate the modeling that you do for other students. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm pleased, on behalf of the Oxford Virtual Academy staff, to bring Jacob under. He's an OPA sophomore, and he's doing a fantastic job in all his classes. He's a great communicator and does a thorough job in his assignments. He has stayed on pace and excellent work all semester long. Jacob is also an outstanding artist. In fact, in October of this past year, he was featured in the Edison Township Library where his work was displayed. Great job, Jacob. Great job, Jacob. Thank you. I'd like to also introduce middle school student Lily Friendle. Lily is a seventh grader. It's her first year with OVA. And she's excelled in academics this year, quite amazingly. She completed seventh grade core curriculum last term and is now working on her eighth grade year over the summer. And then she will begin ninth grade in the fall. So, she's advancing. She has some pretty big plans. I'm not sure she wanted me to share just yet, but I'm pretty amazed by some possibilities that she shared. So, we're just so proud of you, Lily. We're glad you're with OVA.
I'm gonna invite in 11 of our 16 seniors. Our students walking up right now are in our diploma program, our international baccalaureate diploma program. I'll let them line up here. That's one minute per person. I think I've been allotted. I'll be really brief, because there's a lot to say about this group of students. So, right now, we're in the middle of testing. So, if they look a little tired, our students are taking between 12 and 14 different tests right now within a two-and-a-half, three-week window. That includes a DP test and some AP tests that they're choosing to take on top of our DP courses. And so, these students, the best way to describe them are very hard-working, independent learners that kind of creatively drive their own growth while they're here at the high school, not just in the content areas, but in their own self-growth. And these students are very well-rounded and balanced. I think later on today, Mr. Weaver's gonna present a little bit of the district's profile of a graduate. What we aim for our students to be when they leave here, when they walk across the stage, is graduates. And these students right here are really the benchmark of what we're aiming for when we create a profile, not sort of a graduate. Very well-balanced, very well-rounded. And a lot of that language comes from the IB learner profile, most certainly. But these are the actual breathing, living students that we think of, that we discuss, that we talk about when we're planning. You know, what do we aim for all students to look like, feel like, sound like, act like? So they can make their own growth outside of the school district, whether it's into college, whether it's into a trade school, into the military, and grow, become the best version of themselves they can be. And so, I'm gonna read through the names here, just to get some recognition. And so, going through my list here, I have Beth Devlin, I have Rowan Edmonds, I have Caitlin Fox, Keely Jakey, Mackenzie Miller, Lachlan Palmrose, Andrew Romano, Alyssa Chefkeith, Cassie Smith, Kara Smith, Gibson Underwood, and Brady Wine Mco. Let's give them a round of applause. Some handshakes in order here, and some certificates as well. Alright, we have our baccalaureate service this Sunday, and so, we're excited to give them another recognition. So, thank you, guys. We're exceptionally proud of you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys. I'm gonna invite Selena Langfeld up to the front here. You're gonna sit right in the middle. You're gonna stand right in the middle. And so, this is our arts selection, performing arts specifically. And Selena is just a sophomore here, but right now, she's one of the best oboe players in the state. She is in our jazz band, and she is one phenomenal pianist. She is also in our wind ensemble, where of course she plays the oboe. Getting Selena to come today, I decouraged her into coming, because she had some plans. She was working outside of our classes and outside of our performances at Oakland University, getting lessons on the piano and the oboe. And so, she turned me down on my first request. She said, "I got practice. I can't make it." So, I gave her a little bit of peer pressure to get her in today, but that kind of paints a picture of who she is. To no surprise, she has straight A's in every single course she's taken at high school over a 4.0. So, she's a very well-rounded student. And when I was making my selection, getting input from Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Hill, I said, "Yeah, you know, I feel like I see Selena all over the building. Like everywhere I turn around and look, I see Selena. She's everywhere." I think I've gone into one room, I've left and gone into another room, and she's in that other room. And it turns out, she's got a twin sister, Carla, who's also here. Identical twin sister. And so, I thought that was a little bit funny. I have identical twins of my own. Selena was named an outstanding soloist for our Michigan Youth Arts Festival. And she was also selected last year for our Michigan Youth Arts Festival, so that makes it two years in a row running. To quote Mr. John Hill to end his highlight for Selena, Mr. Hill says, "She's an amazing student to work with. She's always prepared and willing to give the extra effort in everything she does. She's an amazing student to have in class." So, Selena, we're really proud of you. Thank you for representing Oxford Elementary. Our athletic selection today, that student could not make it here. She's pretty popular and familiar. She was a state champion, team state champion last year in bowling. She was an individual state champion in bowling this year. And she was also our Female Athlete of the Year, just highlighted a week ago at our Athletic Banquet. And that is Megan Armbruster. She could not make it today. Can you guess why?
Some kind of practice.
She had soccer game. Yeah, she said, "I can't let my teammates down. I committed to the team. I'm honored. I appreciate it, but I can't make it tonight." So, I'm not supposed to recognize her, but I've kind of just recognized her, Megan Armbruster, for our athletic selection.
So, OVA and OSEC, you know, our students are kind of all over the place. So, Natasha Wilcox just got here from Warren, and if anyone has been on 75 in the last little bit, they know it takes a little while. So, she made it, and so, we're appreciative for her to come out and be honored. Natasha is in Phi Theta Kappa at McComb, which is their honors, we'll call it National Honor Society before the college level. She's been on the dean's list every single semester. She's been with us. Actually, earned two different recommendations from her professors, which are very rare for professors to give out these recommendations. She's right now in the EMT program, actually at the top of her class, and she plans to go on and get her paramedic after. So, Natasha Wilcox.
Hello. Thanks for having me this evening. Since we have many new board members, I just wanted to make sure that you...
Since we have many new board members, I just wanted to make sure that you knew, as you're aware, that we have our graduation season is full in effect. We started with prom last week. We will have a week from today, our rehearsal for graduation. But the part that you are involved in is our graduation night. So, I believe Angela made copies for you of two documents that you can review, just so you have an idea of what's going to go on that night. Traditionally, we have the gowns here, but since this meeting is a little bit distant from the actual ceremony next Thursday, our gowns will be here tomorrow, so I will deliver them to Angela where you can pick them up. They'll be hanging on the bag, so they're all set to go. So you can read the finer details of kind of the directions for there, but ultimately you have to remember just the four basic things. One, arrive via the west gate, and you have a map on the back of that sheet. There is a backstage changing area for you, for you to get ready. Be in your spot lined by 6:40, I will be there to direct you. And most importantly, unless you're Tom, simply follow the person in front of you. If you can follow the person in front of you, I will be good. And if you don't, I will be there to make sure, make sure you do. Also, you also have kind of our timing script, so you get an idea of how the ceremony's supposed to go. So, we really try to highlight kids there and we try to make that the kind of the epicenter of the ceremony. So if there are any edits to that, just let Angela or Tim know and they will get it to me and I'll make it before I send the final copies out on Tuesday. Tuesday of next week after rehearsal, we will have our final graduation list. So you can expect a couple of things in the email on Tuesday. The final directions, kind of a detailed script if you want to follow along or if you're an insomniac. But most importantly, a board handout diploma list. So there would be a list of names of which diplomas that you are actually handing out, so you know when to step up and be able to hand those out. And then when you're going to be tapped out for another person to have to hand that out. So if you have any relatives that you really want to make sure that you get the honor, I can place that appropriately in that alphabet, just to let Angela know that and I'll take care of that for you. So if you have any questions, make sure you let Angela or Tim know or email me directly and I'll make sure I answer those for you.
So, just a reminder, especially for Tom and I, we both have a small speaking time at the beginning. What's the guidance on the timeframe?
I think I allotted you two to three minutes, but if that is too long, I don't think anybody's going to be disappointed. So, yeah, so I believe I went through, I'm kind of weird, so I made sure, what consistency? So, last several years were two or three minutes. So, if it goes a little longer, obviously not a big deal, just let me know and we'll make those adjustments.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Board members, we're on number five in our agenda, Word of Education Matters, and we have a motion before us, last meeting. This resolution came to our attention and we're being asked today to possibly put it into a motion. So is there someone who would like to do that, please?
Move to adopt the resolution of support, School Finance Research Collaborative is presented.
Is there support? Mary, support? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Five attendants now.
Correct, thank you. Discussion, oh, over the expenditures? Yep.
So, in previous bond issues, we have come before the board and asked the board to basically pass, not really a resolution, but really an order of operation, allowing either myself, the superintendent, or Sam, the finance person, in order to approve change orders, really in the construction, equipment, or contracts that come up. Depending upon past total dollar amounts in bonds, this amount has varied. And so our recommendation is that you allow us, you basically give us permission to, as we go through that construction, sometimes things come up and we need to make decisions quicker rather than later. And so, our recommendation is to set a limit at $24,500. And so, you know, I don't know, something comes up, we need to swap something out. And let's say that we changed something with the blinds and it cost us $8,000. So, basically you're giving us the authority to act on your behalf, to approve those change orders. If there is something that does come up over the $24,500, we feel that that is the cutoff in which we want to come back to you, present to you what the change is, what the issue is. And at that point, we would ask for your approval. So, it's really just a discussion item tonight. We'll come back and ask for you to vote on it at our next meeting, but that is sort of the threshold we think appropriate for our current bond work.
Any discussion on this point, at this point, right now? Yes, Mary?
Question. Where do we come up with this number? You said that it varies depending on the bond, what is it based upon?
For me, it was the total actual amount of our bonds. So in the past, we've had 80, 90, $100 million bonds. When you're building a building and you're spending maybe 20, 30 million in certain chunks of time, that threshold needs to be higher. With us this summer spending somewhere between 7 and 8 million, we felt that this was the appropriate threshold that we would be able to take care of the far, far majority of these small change orders. But if something were to come up that was large enough over the 24.5, we felt like, wow, we better come back in the board and not just inform you, but let you actually take action.
I think that makes sense, because of the size of those projects. Appreciate it.
Any other comments, question? Yes, Corey?
Is this a 24.5 per instance, or?
Yes.
Does that mean an 8,000 here, an 8,000 there?
No.
An 8,000 here, you get 80,000 quick?
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, we'll turn this into a motion at our next meeting. Number six, Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, the first thing we're going to do is discuss the Portrait of a Graduate? Resolution, so. Miss Concha's going to go ahead and get the presentation up.
Where'd my audience go?
Really good buildup too to this.
Yeah, I was all excited, I was going to add a packed house. Alright, first of all, to clarify, because you heard a different term used tonight. It is a portrait of a graduate. In all fairness to the administrators, we went back and forth between profile and portrait, I don't know how many times. I did it myself as well, matter of fact, on my computer I have a little sign that says Portrait of a Graduate on there. So, in all fairness to them. So we started off, this was part of the strategic plan process, and we were really looking at where we were going as a district. And one of the first things we realized that we had to do was first kind of build that portrait of a graduate. What are we trying to accomplish as a district? And we tried to come up with a common understanding. So we started off with our vision and our mission statements. And we started looking at those and we started asking ourselves, what do we want graduates to look like? When you ask any parent, what do you want your graduate to look like? Or be, they don't say, "I want it to be an ACT or SAT story," they list characteristics. So we start off with our vision and mission and we started looking at the different characteristics that we would want our students to possess. And right away, you may recognize these, as Mr. Brown used them, they are our learner profile. And we had quite a discussion because we have several buildings that are not IB. So, there was a discussion over that as well too. And we wanted to make sure that this was inclusive. This strategic process that we used was inclusive, it was all students, all buildings. And so we had a discussion, a purposeful discussion around the term, the learner profile traits or characteristics, and realized in the end that it fits for all students. So we adopted these as our characteristics for the Portrait of a Graduate. And I'm not going to read them all, you can see, I would think you would all agree that in the end, you would want any of your children to exemplify these characteristics. So then, after identifying the characteristics, we realized also that we needed them, we wanted our students to, while having certain characteristics are really important, they also have to be employable. That was the way I actually phrased it, was I want this person, this Oxford graduate, to be somebody that I want to live next to me and to be gainfully employed. And so we started looking at some of the competencies that they would need to have. Some of those skills that we thought were extremely valuable, to be contributing members in society, both in the workplace and in the community. And we came up with a list that we pared down. This group worked very hard at this, we worked all year, working on these and wordsmithing them and going over them and coming up with them. At that point, after we got the competencies done, we started looking at what does Oxford Community Schools need to do to help students fulfill their destiny in the Portrait of a Graduate? And we came up with what we called the Conditions for Learning. And the conditions for learning are those conditions that we want to see existing in Oxford schools that we think would give our students the best chance at being able to learn these traits and then exemplify these traits. So we also worked in our values, that was important to us, to make sure that our values were represented in the children. These values were chosen from the district survey. So that's the construct of the Portrait of a Graduate, so you kind of understand what you're looking at. Then, this is the process that we use, just to quickly go over it. We started over a year ago. We brought in Marty Chafee from Oakland Schools as a consultant to help lead and guide us through this whole process. He's been with us for two years now, helping with the strategic process as well as the Portrait of a Graduate. Out of district administration, we had a committee of probably half of us, so it was probably about 14, 15 of us. The committee was led by myself. We used survey data so that we could get input from other areas, from the community, from staff, parents as well. There were survey questions that we pointed and looked at from the survey. There were certain questions that we used. We also used the International Baccalaureate Learner Profile and the approaches to learning, which are the skills. And there was a lot more of them, we reduced that number down to the important ones we felt. And then we added other ones that we felt certain areas were missing as well too. We also looked at literature, we looked at examples. And so we began to get this idea of what we were building. So then once we had the words down, we then turned to Matt Johnson and he designed the infographic with input from administrators. And it went through several iterations of design and input and brought it back and got input and then brought it back and we kept going and going. As well as, a team of us edited the document as well too, because it is very text-heavy. So we went through and we went through and we went through and we kept culling it down till we got to the final product. On May 7th, we then took it back to the administrators one last time. Thank you, Miss Concha.
I'm literally bad at this.
Yes, you are.
But I literally am.
And on May 7th, we looked over the final product, brought it back to the administrators, had them look through it again, and then committed ourselves by signing on this document at our ad team. So as you can see there. Tonight, we're presenting the Portrait of a Graduate to have you review and eventually hopefully adopt the board resolution supporting the Portrait of a Graduate. And from there, going on, the building principals are waiting anxiously. They have materials to get ready to present to staff to unveil the Portrait of a Graduate. We have building presentations, we have a district newsletter that it will go in in June. And then finally, we are going to do the same thing that we did here with building administration or with district administration and building administration. We are going to have the staff, the building staff, sign off as well too. At this time, we're going to talk a little bit about how it fits into our strategic process and I'm going to turn that time over to Mr. Brown.
Anita, if you can go up and just bring up the whole timeline. So I normally do not take a lot of time to present, but I think this is maybe one of the most important things that you as a board and our public understands. Going all the way back four years ago, when I became Oxford's superintendent, one of the main questions continuously asked, not only of me, but of the district, was, "How are you guys going to define student achievement? What does that look like? How are you guys going to measure yourself?" And we really began in this journey that we have been calling for a long time, strategic process. A lot of people mix it up with strategic plan, they swap out the two. They're different. What I want you to get from this graphic is not only what we've done, but where we're going and why we're doing it this way. From an organizational standpoint, what I can tell you is that the more aligned everything that we do as a district, the faster and the greater our return on those investments will be. So, yeah, going back a few years ago, one of the very first things that we realized was that as a district, we had never said what our values are. We had played around and identified with some of those things that we want our students to be and to exhibit, but we had never said ourselves organizationally, "How are we going to agree to work and play on a daily basis?" So we put out that year, one of our main questions on our survey was, "What do we think our values should be? What do we believe and how we should work?" And so that is one of the first things that we did. We also went back and we revisited our vision statement and our mission. Was it the same that it had been previously? And if you remember, we tweaked it a little bit, we removed a couple of words, but we really tried to, in as short of words as possible, clearly define what that ultimate end target is. I'll say it this way, in one of my favorite movies, and there's this saying that it's, "Aim small, miss small." Organizationally, the better you can define, the more clearly you can define where you are and where you want to be five, 10 years from now, the more that that's clearly articulated, the faster it's going to be able for you to get your organization there. And so, that's what we did with that. Our theory of action is really, okay, how are we going to go about doing this? And that is really when we started to put our strategic process into play. You can also think of this, what we started to term maybe about a year or, I don't know, a year and a half or two years ago, and that is TMO. It is invoking those values that we agree to work and play by, where it is that we're trying to go, what it is that we do on a daily basis, how does that look in my daily actions? What are our expectations of each of us? And so, that is really our theory. This is how we think we're going to be able to get there. From a board perspective, this is where you have come into play. Over the last number of years, all of our policies that we've been reviewing, continually in the back of our mind is always, "Is this policy going to help us get to where we need to be?" And that has been a huge, a huge ongoing piece. If our policies, how we govern ourselves, do not clearly align with what we say we're doing, we're going to start going in a whole bunch of different directions. What you had presented before you tonight is that Portrait of a Graduate. At the end of the day, from this day forward, until we decide to change it again, our definition of student success is a portrait of a graduate. If we're asked, here's our document, this clearly defines where we want to go with our education. This is how we're defining success. And we want that success for all of our students. Now comes the strategic plan. Ad team's been working on the strategic plan all of this year as well. That will be presented to you coming forward shortly. And the strategic plan is really what most people think of it as. It usually has two to three goals. And yes, guess what? Those goals clearly align with our portrait, our policies, and what we think we need to accomplish in order to get to where we're going. to get to where we're going. Although our strategic process says budget up there, you can also think of it as either investments, or this is how we choose to bring about the change that we're talking about. Organizationally, one of the best ways to ensure that you not only build, but keep trust with your community, is make sure your actions, policy and budget, those are probably two of the biggest actions our district takes, that they align with what we say. I'll give you an example. Many districts will say, "We are only interested in academic achievement. That is the only thing that we're called to do, and that's what, that's what we're here for." But yet, they will turn around and spend large quantities of their money, their budget, on other things other than academics, sports, arts, those types of things. The message that is sent to the community is, how you spend your money is not in, it's not congruent with what you're seeing. And so, we always want to make sure that our budget or our investments align with where we're trying to go. Lastly, or not lastly, but within the strategic plan, we're, what we're working on actually today is, how do we know if we're going in the right direction? How do we know if we're hitting those targets? And that's how we have, we build an accountability system. And so, we are looking at, what are those different measurements within that strategic plan, within those goals? How do we know if we're achieving these? And so, that's something else that will be coming up. Lastly, is our evaluation system. And as you know, we have really tweaked and moved our evaluation system almost every year over the last three years. Why is this a major component? Because at the end of the day, people are going to perform, act, do what they're evaluated on, right? And so, again, we need to make sure that, independent of whether you're a teacher, or a support person, or administrator, doesn't matter, we need to ensure that everybody's evaluation system for their role is aligned to everything else that we're trying. And so, I just, I felt it was important for not only our community, but for our board and our own administrative team, to just sort of pause and reflect on what this strategic process is and what it means. When we say the process, it's all of these items. We don't have the luxury of just saying, okay, we're only going to do one thing at a time. We started moving on many of these pieces, all at the same time. It's taken us four years to get to where we are today. The good news is, I think we'll really start to see many of the fruits of our labor. And that, while we may not be perfect, I think organizationally, we are more aligned today in everything that we do than we have been in a very, very long time in our district. And so, for that, I'm very excited. I would just end with, just reminding you that this is a process. We're going to come back. We're going to get two years into our strategic plan, and we're going to say, hmm, maybe we need to be doing something else. Maybe we need to add a different measurement here. Maybe we're not getting the results that we're looking for. That's okay. This is not set in stone. That's why it's called a strategic process. All right? So, I know that was a little bit long, maybe a little bit preachy. I'm sorry about that. But our portrait of a graduate is a huge milestone. We've put a tremendous amount of time into it. You know, sometimes when people tweet out the hashtag #AllIn, administratively, our whole ad team, everyone signed on to that. We're going to be bringing a resolution before the board. We want you guys to sign off on that, that resolution. And personally, I would like you guys to have a portrait, and the board sign off, and we display that in the boardroom. Why? Because we want everyone to know, every day, whatever they're doing, that's what we're working towards. All right?
Yeah, she does.
So, when you were talking about the accountability system, you said you use, it's like your measurement piece. So give me an example of measurement. What do you mean measurement? Like measurement of the district?
So, yeah, well, it could be. So, surveys could be used as a way to measure certain things, right? I'm trying to think of a really good one. If within our strategic plan, well, one of the goals is definitely purely academically related, all right? We're going to have different measurements in there to see how well we're progressing. So, here's an example. At our last board meeting, we brought forward our new family school liaisons, all right? Our belief is that we needed to help our students in some other areas, other than academics, to get them in a position where they're ready to learn. We need to know whether that investment is yielding the results that we're expecting. So, measurement may be, with those students that they're interacting with, are we seeing their academic achievement increase?
So maybe a small, a specific group of students?
Absolutely. It can be very broad, very specific.
Okay.
And we can have multiple measurements for just one goal or one activity, because we may want to look at it from a whole bunch of different angles. Eric?
So, just so I understand, so we're at portrait of a graduate today, right?
That's what was presented today.
Okay. So where are we today for this process?
So we're working on all of these, all at the same time. Some things we had to go sequentially. Like, we had to do our values first, three or four years ago, because we couldn't go any further until we knew how we were going to do things, right? So, some things we had to go in sequential order. I can tell you, though, that even though we didn't have our portrait of a graduate completed last year, we are definitely working on our evaluation systems. So with those things in mind, even though they weren't completed, we still were trying to get them closer and closer to what we think we ultimately want to have. So this is, it's a tough thing to represent, in that it is not necessarily a sequential order.
It's not a linear thing, but...
Correct.
So, just for me, I'd kind of like to understand, we are three or four years away from full implementation of this process, or...
No, I would say...
But it can be hard to find, because it's growing. You're never quite sure when you're going to be done completely.
Correct. So, I don't think this process ever gets completed. I think you just come back and you'll revisit things. So maybe based upon some of our measurements, we may come back and say, "There's some policies we need to relook at in how we do something." Or, we may need to come back and adjust our budget or our investments. I will tell you from, I'll say, more of a traditional strategic plan approach, the goals that we have identified, and a lot of the strategic initiatives under each goal, we think it's going to take us probably three to four years to try to accomplish those goals and those strategic initiatives. It's probably not a clean answer, but this is really, this is messy business.
Yeah. Yeah. And some of these things, as I read the characteristics, it's really hard to, hard to roll out those, or understand students that may have those. So it's hard, you know, if you have a kid that engages in responsible, as a responsible citizen, so you might not know those things are happening. You have to kind of trust their ability. But in the bigger picture, if you want to be able to communicate these, for lack of better terms, values or things that you'd like to parents, how do you foresee that happening? Be something as simple as, "This is what we expect from students who come to our district," or something like that?
So I would say, you can take many different forms. Tonight would be an example of one form. We're publicly recognizing students at all levels, and every one of these students that came up here tonight, they fit somewhere in there. We want to share that with our entire community. These students are really, are really great examples of some of those characteristics that we're talking about. And sometimes, it doesn't fit in a nice little box, and you can check it off, but at the end of the day, do we really want to highlight, you know, what Jimmy did? We do, absolutely. And we want to encourage his classmates to say, "Listen, this is, this is how Jimmy took action. This is what he's doing. How can, how can each one of us do our own part?" So that would just be one example. But I think, I think there's a lot of things that we can do. I think, just within our IB curriculum, we're trying to teach that on a daily basis.
Yeah. So, you're going to officially publish this, okay?
Yes.
And once that's done, how do you send that out to parents, so they can see it and read it?
Yep, great, great question. And so, we've got a timeline for that. So, at our next board meeting, we want you guys to adopt it. We want you to sign off on it. Before our school year ends, our administrators are presenting everything into their buildings, to their entire staff. At the end of June, beginning of July, when that last quarterly newsletter comes out, this is going to be an insert that you can pull right out. In fact, tonight, I want to give you... So, basically, what you saw visually tonight, Mr. Johnson put together this in a nice little, I don't know, not a tri-fold, but a bi-fold or something document that puts it all together. This right here is almost going to be inserted as-is within that quarterly newsletter. So all, whatever, 15,000 homes that our quarterly newsletter goes to, they've got a hard copy.
Tim, it'll go in your newsletter in the centerfold section. The page ahead of that, so if somebody could bend the staples or pull it out, the page ahead of it has an introduction article talking about it. So it actually goes to 7,672 homes, roughly.
Next time, you should have exact numbers for us.
Chad, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, I guess kind of a comment. I appreciate the explanation, Tim, because when I was reading through this, I didn't, I wasn't able to pull all the details, but I appreciate that. I know that a lot of work went into this. So I'm looking at the strategic process, and I know, accompanied the discussion, I think a linear layout makes sense, but would it, I guess, would you agree that this is really a series of concentric circles, where some of these, some of these tasks, I guess we'll say, rely on the others, but some of them, you know, policies and budgeting and accountability and evaluation, these are the things that are happening constantly, right? You don't want that stuff in.
Correct. This is what I want you to get out of this graphic, if you don't get anything else. The most important thing in there that we're trying to show, the key is alignment. That is what a lot of organizations, from a systems perspective, do not get. They have all these different business units. They're all doing their own thing. They all say, yep, we got a vision, we got a mission, but yet, all of those little things, daily things going on, is not in alignment. The better that thing can be in alignment from beginning to end, we're going to be way more successful.
Thank you. Yeah, not a timeline, necessarily. If it's got a little bit of an element of a timeline in, but it's really just alignment.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Do you have to read the resolution, Mr. Johnson, or... We'll have to make the motion, yeah. This, you shared this with us last, last meeting.
Right.
The two labs, and so does anyone like to make this motion, please?
Move to approve the purchase of a computer programming lab from Inacom TSG in the amount of $41,839.36, and the purchase of a graphics design lab from Apple Inc. in the amount of $69,292 for Oxford High School.
Is there support? Eric, support? Discussion? Yes, please.
Question, I'm making the assumption, I'm clarifying that these are CTE funds?
Yes.
Or CTE?
Yes. One of them will be the Apple lab, so Mr. Johnson can make more of these infographics.
So the students can learn how to make these graphics?
Yes. And then the other one is the computer programming class that we're changing, and Mrs. Monkevich is coming up from the middle school, too, through, she has a swatted background in computer programs. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So you're free to order, Mrs. Butts.
She just had the purchase.
All right, next item of business is going to be the annual education report presentation, and also the school index, which is, all of it really falls under school accountability. The annual index report is a SO requirement, which is a federal law, replace no child left to mine. And the school index is the rating system that the state of Michigan uses to, is out of 100, that gives schools a rating, so you can look at it and kind of compare them somewhat. So, we're going to look at that. And actually, will you start off that, I think the Firefox browser is up, if you could grab that real quick, you just kind of, sorry, I should have said something to you. Just so you know, just before we get started, the AERs, as well as the building school improvement plans are on the website. Part of that is, it's required, and part of it, too, is that parents know as well, too. The AERs are public information that is, needs to be available to the public. So ours are posted on our website. There's a link to them, both the cover letter and the combined report, and then as well, you'll see the school improvements. So I just wanted to show you that, so you know where it is. It's under the district tab, I believe, and you can get to it, it's heading, if you want to look at it. So, going back to the presentation really quick, the annual education report has two components. Oh, you're okay. The combined report and the cover letter. There's distinct information in each of them, if you want to go ahead. Kind of the next couple of slides. So there's requirements for the cover letter, and the principals all write the, we do this also, I should clarify, the AER is required for the district, which Mrs. Thron writes the cover letter for that, and each building has to do one as well, too. And each building principal does the cover letter as well, too. And in the cover letter, there's several things. There's an address from the principal. And in the cover letter, there's several things, there's an address from the principal, as well as we put this information that you can read up there, such things as depending on the grade level, parent teacher conference attendance, high schools need dual enrollment information, APIB courses and stuff like that. So if you're interested in looking at that, all you need to do is go into the AERs and you can pull it up and you can see that information for yourself, okay? And the combined report that is done at the state level, they do this and it's basically our state testing data. It's mostly the M-Step, MyAccess and SAT data. PSAT is not required for accountability, therefore it's not in this report. The NATE, that's the national test assessment, I forget what it stands for now, but if we take it every, like last year, we took it in 1718, I think we had like three or four buildings that participated in it. Leonard, Clearlight, OMS every year because it's the only middle school seems every time we get picked to do it.
Yeah.
They get the, they get to do it as well and the four points, excuse me. But anyways, and then we also have teacher quality, they go in, they look at the, is the teacher certified or not? We have graduation data, attendance data that they pull all from our reporting and CEPI and our accountability status as well too. And staff qualifications, you know, is probably the most important thing in the whole thing is that all Oxford teachers and parent professionals meet all current state and federal certification requirements. We are good to go. Cumulation of the AER, it was, we presented it in a warm meeting, we put it on the district website as I showed you, it is also, the copies need to be in the main office at the schools, also in central office as well too, and an email was sent to all district parents informing them of this publication on the website. School index, this is the Michigan's report card right now, you may have heard of the letter system law that was presented by the state legislature, I think it passed in December, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around there, and signed into law as Snyder was heading out. State legislature felt that it was important to have letter grades, MDE thought it was important to have a zero to 100 scale. We eventually will have both, or they're trying to figure it out, they've got a letter into the federal government asking, hey, what do we do? So eventually you may see A through F, just so you know the connection between the two. The index score is made up of six different components, student growth, student proficiency, those are both state tests, student, school quality, student success, which is basically what programs are you offering? Do you offer elementary arts and stuff like that? Graduation rate, so that's for high schools, English, and if you don't have that for an elementary, they just presented to other areas. English learner progress, that's your kids that have English as a second language and how you make it. That is a small group, it's about 140 kids, and that's extremely important that, just for their own sake of them growing up as well too, but it also keeps a heightened emphasis on that group as well too, many times because there's not a whole lot of funding that follows ELs do, but there's a whole lot of regulations that do. And so it's very important the district keeps a commitment to that and we do quite vigorously, matter of fact, we just met last week and we're working on our EL program evaluation. And then we have assessment participation, which is, did you have all your kids test? Also as well, one of the biggest things that has an impact on your index score is whether or not you have a subgroup. In order to have a subgroup, this is in your, as you can see, between student growth and student proficiency, not a math whiz, but what's that, 63%? 63% of your score is made up of those two factors. That's one shot, that's our last statement, one, and you give them Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, basically, and so there's a lot riding on that. If you have a subgroup in that, in that area, that is where you have more than 30 kids. It could be an ELs, that could be pre and reduced, it could be an ethnic group, starting to think of at risk as well. So those have a, an impact on your scores. And basically what we see with the index scores is if you have very few subgroups, your index scores tends to be higher, and if you have a lot of subgroups, you tend to have more impact. Those kids tend not to score as well for whatever reasons they have, the challenges that they're facing. So that's one thing when you look at the index scores, just to kind of explain. So here are the index scores for Oxford, remember it's on a zero to 100 scale. Crossroads and bridges is one of the more ridiculous things in the world that we have to try to measure that with this type of system. We basically look at those as far as holding Mr. Kokosian and Mrs. Spann losing accountable, if that's really what these index scores are supposed to help with. We look at the graduation and how the kids are doing at their respective buildings, we do not pay much attention to this. Lakeville, OVA, OES, OMS, you can see as we go off the scores, the scores are what they are. If you look at it, you will see at Lakeville and OVA now, as they've gotten a lot bigger, and OES and OMS, you will see a lot more subgroups in those schools and therefore there's a little difference in scoring. Otherwise, pretty much in all other areas, they score all pretty much close to the same if you take away the center. Is there any questions, concerns?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Good.
And then the last thing is OVA purchase for your review. Chromebooks, 150 for 97, 97,275, and this is for.
This coming year's replacement.
Just annual replacement circulated, okay. So there you go. And then we'll approve it next, in two weeks.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Barna, finance and operations?
Good evening, everyone. In front of you and in the board pack was a cost summary report for the upcoming summer construction work and what's referred to as bulletin one. So some changes to the project and some costs variations from the original RFPs that were put together. And so there's a contingency set up for obviously all of the construction work that's occurring this summer. In totality, from the letter that was put together by Jade Warner here from Clark Construction, our project manager for the summer construction work, it's totaling a little over $76,000. And again, it's detailed here, all of the changes. That $76,000 and change is coming from the contingency set aside for this construction. So again, I know that Superintendent Thron brought to us earlier this evening the fact that we would like the board for the next, the next board meeting to approve basically anything that's over 24,500 and change orders will come to the board, anything below that will obviously have, if you see fit, the ability to just go ahead and make those changes in order to keep on the bond scope and the schedule, I should say, the schedule. So what we have here is $76,000 of changes, so we wanted to review this with you, ask you if you had any questions regarding this, and at the next board meeting, we will get your hopeful approval so that we can stay on track for the upcoming work that's going to start in about, a little bit less than a month. So if you have any questions, feel free, otherwise we will wait for your approval again at the 21st of 20.
Just please.
Just for clarification, you were referring to having a contingency set up, so that means you have a plus or minus built into.
Correct.
The contract, you're assuming that it's probably going to go up because you always find something.
That's correct.
You always have to go back to Home Depot.
So to speak, yes, you are correct.
Right, okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
No, that's, that's absolutely, that's exactly how it works, and not just because it's a bond project, but any, any project, you always have to set aside. But for the level of work, as Superintendent Thron mentioned, you know, we have a little over $7 million worth of construction happening this summer, the vast majority of it being air conditioning in all the elementaries and then some work here at OHS. You know, the contingency, you know, was set up from the beginning and this is going to be obviously reducing that contingency. But it was caught early by Jade as going through with all the subs, and so better to do it now rather than wait and potentially slow down the process during the summer while the work is going on.
The second part of that question is, it doesn't look like a lot of big things, but.
Correct.
We want to be sure that we're staying on schedule because I know the schedule's really, really tight.
It's, it's tight, absolutely. And so, yeah, we're, we're still very excited, we're all in, aren't we, Jade? And so we, we are excited, but again, it's good to catch this early and not to say that there will be, there will be more. I know there will be more, but it's just one of those things where, again, because of the size as well, we want to ensure that you're aware of this and the public is aware of these things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please. Excuse me. How much, once this is, it's resolved, what's the remaining contingency?
I mean the contingency, Jade, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that north of 320,000, is that correct?
Yeah, as of today.
Okay, so there's still 320,000 of contingency for just the series one summer work. So as, as just to reiterate as well, this is a trade point, and I want to reiterate that we have more construction coming in the next four years, and there'll be additional funds that we'll be receiving. So next year, we're going to sell another $9.4 million worth of bonds, and so the construction that's associated with that will also have contingency set aside. And then two years down the road, maybe a year and a half down the road, we're going to sell the final $9.4 million worth of bonds, that work will also have contingency set aside as well. So again, just want to be very clear of where this is coming from.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. The final thing that you have in front of you, something that we do annually, all public schools in the county do this, obviously for the ISD, this is the ISD's budget, Oakland schools budget. By June 1st of each year, each public school district within Oakland schools must review and or, and approve or disapprove of the budget. So again, before you is the synopsis of the budget. If you so choose, before voting on it at the next board meeting in two weeks, feel free to contact me, you may even have, yes, you do, right here behind me. But really, the gist of the budget is this, there's going to be a three and a half percent increase for Oakland schools in their revenue for their general fund, primarily related to 50%, 57% of their revenue in their general fund comes from property taxes, and so the value of property taxes has increased, at least they're assuming 3.5%. And so their, their increases overall across the board for all their funds are going to be going up by approximately 3.5%. It's also good for us as well, we get a component of revenue from the ISD, and so that helps us to a certain degree as well. So again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, you can email me, call me, and if you'd like a copy of this, again, there's a copy behind me, you could also have mine, but I may need to use it for reference if you're asking me the question.
Anything else for Sam? Sam, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pass?
Yes, so if you recall, last month, I shared with you the report that we received from the Michigan Department of Education Office of Civil Rights, they had conducted an audit back in September, we were the first district that they came to visit for the CTE audit. It went, it went really well compared to, I suppose, what, what we were anticipating. Lisa's done a great job leading this and organizing a lot of information. They had been running behind, we were supposed to get their findings a couple of months ago, I think they've had some struggle keeping up with the amount of work, but shared with you those findings, and so a few weeks ago, Mr. Barna and I and Mr. Sarkins and Mrs. Butts, we did a walkthrough of all the findings at the high school. So what we've done is we boiled that down into a document that we've shared in your packet this evening, which are just the items that there was a finding for. In the last document we shared with you, it was everything, many of those items were perfectly fine. Not a lot of significant surprises here, many of these things have been corrected. I won't go through them all in, in line by line detail, some of them are just documentation requirements, how we present and share public notice of our CTE programs in a variety of languages, the complaint process that was on our, our website. The, the majority of them were really accessibility issues. Doing a walkthrough of the high school and finding that the accessibility stall, the toilet happened to be out of commission at the time they were there, a missing latch on a bathroom door. Most of the items were paper towel holders that were too, mounted too high, or a soap dispenser that was mounted at the back of a counter where someone in a wheelchair wouldn't be able to access that, maintaining 36-inch aisleways within classrooms throughout the building. So most of them are easily corrected things that we will correct in-house, that Mr. Sarkins will use our existing staff for. The, the one item that had the most significant cost is it impacted all of our bathrooms was having pipe covers underneath all of the sinks, so when someone wheels up in a, in a wheelchair, that they don't hit that, that pipe. I believe we only had one bathroom that even had any pipe coverings, and so those pipe coverings needed to be applied district-wide. Nominal cost for that, I believe it's $75 per sink, and we had 69 total across the high school that, that needed to be corrected. So most of these items will be corrected in either the summer and the fall, we are presenting this back to the, to the state with fall timelines, and then the one area in here that, that has a more extended timeline is the parking lot. And so when they came out, we had shared with them that the parking lot was a part of our bond project, was going to be completely redone up to current standards in 2022, they were fine with that, didn't actually even go out and look at the parking lot, so they're assuming that our project is going to bring our parking lot, accessibility, handicap spaces, number spaces, all up to code. So that'll keep this case open for a couple of years and allow the bond to cover that, that work. So any questions you might have, happy to answer.
Thank you, sir.
I don't believe we have a, a motion on this agenda, so we'll add a motion to the next meeting and then we'll go to approve this and send this back to the state.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Student services?
This evening.
First reading of the policies. Please, Heather?
Move to, move to approve the first reading of policy numbers, 0100 definitions, 0167.2 closed session, 0422.01 drug-free workplace, 143034304430 leaves of absence, 2414 reproductive health and family planning, 3110 conflict of interest, 3120 employment of professional staff, 3120.04 employment of substitutes, 5113.01 schools of choice intra-district, 5113.02 school of choice options provided by federal law, 5200 attendance, 5330 use of medications, 5460 graduation requirements, 6321 new school construction renovation, 6325 procurement federal grant fund, 6605 crowdfunding, 8400 school safety information, 8402 emergency operations plan, 8500 food services, 8640 transportation for field and other district sponsor.
Thank you very much for that. Is there support? Eric, support? Discussion?
Great work. Putting this all together, one of the things that stuck out to me, and just wanted to bring it up because we're talking about it recently is, or maybe someone was talking me about it, yeah, talk to the conflict of interest, where we talk about teachers and tutoring students.
Yep.
So I just kind of wanted to bring that up because there's been some discussion about that, so it does address that directly, the, the district policy for such relationships. So. I just wanted to bring that up.
Did you have any questions about that or anything?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I think that is very clear, and that is OVA. Thank you again.
Yeah, it was good work. Any other comments? All right, this is the first reading, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Angela, do we have anyone with unscheduled? All right.
No.
Very good. You have a list of scheduled activities, number 12, clarifications? Well then, we're to the final board comments. Chad, how about you first?
Sure. First, my apologies for being late, I was out in, at Bryan High School watching the girls tennis team.
How'd we do?
We won today. The girls wrapped up first place in the league last week, and they move on to regionals on Thursday out in Rochester.
Good.
Excellent season there. So I, just, just very brief, I, actually I- So I just, just very brief, actually I regret missing the first part of the meeting because I like to, I like to be able to see the, the kids come up and recognize for all the work that they're doing through the course of the school year. I guess just, just real quick, I guess, to Tim and the team, I really appreciate all the work that, that you guys have done on the portrait of the graduate and, you know, I think that, you know, for us to really know where we're going, you got to have a map, right? So I appreciate the thought that's gone into that and even down to, you know, I think you've thought at the detail level, but you, you put it together, you presented it in a way that's very simple to understand and I think that, I think that thought process goes a long way. I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Chad. Mary?
Thank you. Congratulations to all the students who were recognized. That was exciting. I wanted to mention Selena specifically. I was at the band concert last night and wow, she was nothing short of mesmerizing. I just, it's so difficult to play an oboe as it is and wow, she was just a guest. The whole band, all the bands were up. Great job, Selena. And I know Mr. Throh talked about Megan not being here last night. She was performing last night also with the band, another one of our students that is doing so many, many things, which is fantastic. It's good, I like seeing the 4.0 students and I love seeing the students up here who are making progress, you know, that we, we're recognizing both of those as important, coming back to that portrait of a graduate and what we're doing to be sure that everybody is served and we're doing that. I think your speech was inspirational, Ben. It really is. I love, I love when things come together and are organized and I really enjoy the way that you explain things and really helpful with me understanding some of those things and the value of putting those things together. I mean, this is the way organizations should work to, to bring the most benefit, is people working together from their values, everything's tied together and then being able to measure it at the end, until you have an IT worker, because it's very important to be able to measure it because you don't know, if you don't know what's broken, you don't know how to fix it, you don't know how to improve. So this a shout out to all the other data geeks because analytics is the job to get into in the future, data analytics, study data analytics. Great job to be a law author. I also appreciate Mr. Pass that we're getting right on top of these items from that, from the audit. As small as some of them are, I know I've had occasion myself to be in a cart, a few years ago, I broke my foot and you know, you never, you don't really realize, I don't realize the challenges other people have until I'm in a similar situation. Mine was only temporary, but trying to get in and out of doors and bathroom stalls and things like that. And most people don't think about, well, where the paper towels are, but it's important for somebody, you know, and I'm glad that we're getting most of this stuff done right away, you know, in the fall, let's get it done. There's no question, there's no discussion. It's, I'm glad that they brought it to our attention, you know, and we can take care of that, which is exciting too. Congratulations to Tower. We got to see them perform when we were downtown with Tork at the, at the world competition. We did all right. We had a good time, you know, the kids had a good time. We got to meet some new people and we appreciate Tim coming down there, Mr. Pass coming down to visit us. I will say congratulations to the Thunder Chickens, our team from down the road who was world champion, which was great. It's great to have it right here in our area and we support, and we support them also. It's a great meeting, this is a really great meeting tonight, very inspirational too. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Eric?
So I can remember a year ago, this meeting a year ago, sitting in the audience, watching the activities and all the kids come in and get their awards and hoping that I could be on the other side of the table. So I feel very lucky and blessed to be here to see this again. And I remember talking to Heather after, she said it's just, it's just a great feeling, you know, you get to see the kids get their awards and just the, you know, feeling good about it and happiness, so I can, I can appreciate that. Some of the things I came with, like Gabrielle's spelling guidance, I mean, I have a hard time with that word. Is it I, U, UI? I never know, so I, spelling is just a foreign language to me. Without word correct, I can't do it. And the IB students were fantastic and sufficiently intimidating intelligence, so I look forward to finding them on LinkedIn in a couple of years. And Selena, I've heard amazing things about her, Jim talks about her, I'm just giving tips about her all the time, but she's, she's going to be a very, very impressive person in a few years, so just grateful to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Cory?
I'll be honest, tonight is one of my favorite nights as a board member. And we talk about projects, we talk about policy, we talk about programs, but tonight you, you see all the benefits or the rewards of those benefits, you know, about Tim presenting a clear vision. I see a lot of companies that struggle with this, a lot of organizations struggle with this and you see many divisions that work in their own little silos and, you know, working on what I want to do or what's important to me may not be to you, but until you have a clear vision of where the entire organization's going, it's a mess. And it's, it's good to see this vision, it's good to see tonight, the rewards that we've seen over the last four years and the progress we've made and where it's going to go in the next four, five, six years. I mean, look how many kids were recognized tonight, you know, and I'm sure people in the TV audience are going to look and say, oh, we're recognizing, you know, a crosswalk. But you know what? It may not be a big deal to most people, but I bet to that scared mom, that three-year-old kid, that was everything. So that, that's a big award to me. It's, I like to see that. Other programs, the Oxford Gives Back, I mean, that was a huge success a couple of weeks ago. We, we worked on three different houses and every one of the homeowners said, you know, kids today get a bad rap because all they want to do is play video games, they're, they're, they're lazy, they're this, they're this. And, you know, to see a bunch of kids come out and give up a whole Saturday or give up a Sunday working for somebody who needs it, and the amount of kids that we had participating in that speaks volumes to the, the vision and where this school's going. So it says a lot about our character, so great job. And it wasn't preaching, it was passion.
Thank you, Cory. Heather?
I echo what everybody has said tonight, really. I thought it was a great presentation as well and I appreciate, I appreciate the layout of it. I think that's important to, for your administrators to know that, that they can work within lots of different areas and succeed and help their team succeed and stuff. I just, I, I think it's very clear. So for somebody who works for our district or whatever to not understand what, what their, what their role should be, it's pretty clear. And so I appreciate that you are rolling that out to them and I thought it was well presented and of course, I love this meeting because I love the kids. So that's that.
Very good, very good. I want to start with this and go backwards. I'm hoping that the community over time will realize how profound this is. Most of us are in companies, many of us are in companies and we fail to do this. We've done aspects of this. We've done missions, visions, but to, but to align it so that there's adherence and adoption from the highest level to the lowest level, it's too much work for anybody to really do. Nobody wants to do that. We'd rather just put up a thing and say, look at us. So this is profound, everyone. I just want you to realize how profound this is. And to have administrators signing their names, saying that they're all in, asking a board to sign their names, saying that they're all in, going down to teachers, faculty. There's organizations that could only dream to do something like this. And again, because it's too much work, they wouldn't do it. Secondly, as I look at the wheel, so much of it is not academic. I mean, are you guys crazy? I mean, open-minded, principled. I mean, there, there are characteristics here that I am so proud of all of you for doing because under pressure from federal governments and states about what it means to, to be successful, I am so proud that Oxford has risen above all of that and said, that's only one aspect of a kid. And that only says one thing, because I know lots of really smart people that didn't make it, that are belling up the bars right now. But I also know some people that maybe didn't do so well academically and pushed them through eight years of college. It's about these other attributes. If those other attributes aren't surrounded a mind, you can't make it. And so I am proud of a school district that would allow a boy to stand up here and receive an award because he's reflective, because he's worked hard to be a better kid. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the only thing I want to say tonight is I really want to acknowledge all the work of our ad team. This hasn't been one event, it hasn't been one year. We've been working on this for a long, long time. And so, yeah, I just, I want to acknowledge all the work that our entire ad team has put All of this, I'm going to work over the last number of years with every aspect of our strategic process. And, yeah, I'm just, I'm really thankful that we've gotten to the point that we've gotten to and it's, it's because of everybody's hard work, so thank you.
I don't know why we do this, but I add one more thing, just popped in my head. Do you realize that the process that all of you went through fulfills the first four steps of the seven habits of highly effective people? To be proactive, to begin with the end in mind, to put first things first and seek win-win? You guys did it. It's, it's astounding. So thank you very much. We can adjourn. It's a great day to be up. Wildcat.